Hello. Hiya. Sorry, we're just looking, we're just testing this live broadcast now. And basically, they're encapsulated, they're pretty usable. And I'm not using them, because we're just looking at someone on the door. Actually, I'm checking. Um, be easy. And they were... Alright, so yeah, please don't worry. No, no, it's okay, it's okay. We've been quite popular now, so thanks. Yeah, we're very delighted with our new website. Yeah, most of the things, you can't get a fair review if it wasn't all... Okay, no worries. Okay, cool. I'll pass it to you accordingly. Yeah, I'll buy that, so I'm just gonna live anyway, so. But hopefully, it'll be fairly obvious from the, from the, from the... Okay, cool. Alright, yeah, quick, yes. Wait, we've got the X taken in buckets still. The X, oh god, there. Splendid, we can crop this. Yeah. That's what we're sitting there talking about, label on the screen. Everyone's got a voice on the screen there. Definitely on the TV.
So do you want to keep this held on?
Yes, we can.
At least it's just... I don't know. Yes. I'm just worried, I'm worried it's changing some of us. So why don't you talk to her?
Testing one, two. Okay.
Hey, how's it going? Uh, we are, yeah, we are done.
Yeah. Yeah, we used to go by the phone.
Ah, I'm on my way. Um, yes, currently we're on the public side. Um, but yeah, we can't talk. But yeah. 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 Yeah, um... Anything else, any assistance off the back of that? Thank you. Yeah, same with what I'm gonna say. Same with that. Thank you.
Mic test, one, two. Testing, one, two. Sort of about a minute and fifteen seconds delay, isn't it? Is it worth coming off the holding side temporarily?
Hi, so we're doing some sound check.
Yeah, um...
What's the verdict, Rob?
They've not got it through yet, but they're trying to be another lap.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, got sound from the other one anyway.
Oh, okay.
...
Good evening and welcome everybody. Just a couple of housekeeping things. It is actually protocol when the mace bearer enters the room and asks people to receive the mayor for everybody to stand. So if you're able to stand at the point that the mace bearer enters the room and says please welcome the mayor, we'd be very grateful. And the second one is to councillors concerning the microphones. Now these microphones are highly directional, so you don't have to talk directly in, you don't have to talk into them like this, but you do have to project your voice towards the microphone. So if you do this and do that as you talk, the sound will dip in and out and therefore members of the public may struggle to hear, your fellow councillors may struggle to hear, but also people listening on the webcast will not be able to hear you either. So they encourage you to speak towards the microphone, that would be good. If you're, you should have on your handsets a picture of the Charmwood logo. If you put your, if you put your card in, it should then say welcome councillor and your name. So if you have your card in and it says welcome councillor Smith, then you've got, your, your microphone is working correctly. There's only one thing you then need to do, and that is underneath the screen there is a centre button which has a blue oval circle on it. That, that button will allow you to join the queue. So when the queue is open, it will say press to join queue. If you press that button, it should say in queue, please wait. Don't keep pressing the button because it's like a light switch. So if you press it, you'll take yourself out of the queue. So if it says in queue, please wait, you will get called. And then when you come to speak, it will say talk now and your microphone should be activated. And of course, your picture should be displayed upon the, on the screen up there. Any questions? Okay, I've no problem at all. Thank you very much.
Councillors, the Charmwood Borough Council, ladies and gentlemen, we're back. Please be seated. Good evening councillors. And I, and I would like to make a special welcome to our two new councillors, councillor Lenny and councillor Maynard Smith, who both joined the council last Thursday. I welcome also members of the public and the press. This is an extraordinary meeting of Charmwood Borough Council to consider the Charmwood Local Plan Core Strategy for submission to the Secretary of State. This meeting can be observed by members of the public and for the first time is being streamed live via the council's website. There is no public speaking at this meeting and it is for councillors to debate the matter. In order that everyone can hear the proceedings, councillors, members of the public present here and those watching the webcast, may I ask that you now switch off your mobile phones and/or pages or turn it to silent mode and I would be grateful if you would do this now. Councillors, please protect, project your voice towards the microphone. You do not need to be right next to it, but you do need to speak clearly towards it. Members of the public, to ensure everyone in the public seating can hear the whole proceedings, please do not shout or heckle or engage in lengthy conversation. It is not my intention to curtail expressions of delight and applause or agreement to what is being said, but I must stress that this must be within the bounds of decorum and respectability. I am looking forward to a polite and well-ordered meeting with a constructive debate. My role as Mayor of the Borough of Charmwood is to ensure that important issues affecting the borough are properly considered and debated by those elected to undertake this responsibility and I will ensure that this meeting is conducted appropriately and not disruptive in any way. At approximately eight thirty, if the meeting is still in session, I shall propose a short adjournment. Thank you. Apologies have been received from councillors Bentley, Stuart Jones and Stork and from Honorary Alderman Dodd and Tormey. If councillors have any other apologies, please press your button to indicate. Thank you. I come now to item two disclosures of pecuniary and personal interest. May I refer councillors to the guidance note from the monitoring officer in respect of consideration of item three point one on tonight's agenda, the local plan core strategy. The guidance note is attached to the agenda from page eight to page eleven. Section two, which starts on page nine, sets out disclosable pecuniary interests. If you have a disclosable pecuniary interest, you must declare it and leave the room and take no part in the debate nor the voting. Section three, which starts on page ten, sets out other personal interests. You must declare any personal interests. You will need to consider whether your personal interests could lead to bias and the guidance note provides assistance with identifying these. If you have a personal interest which could be considered as leading to bias, you must leave the room and not take part in the debate nor the voting. Councillors are also reminded that the guidance vote sets out that unless, the guidance note sets out that unless you have an open mind and are prepared to consider all of the relevant information presented to you at the meeting before reaching a decision, you should not take part in the meeting. Any councillors wishing to seek clarification are asked to indicate in order to receive appropriate advice from the monitoring officer. I now call on the chief executive to report on disclosures of interest in the business to be considered at this meeting which have been made by councillors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have the following disclosures of interest. First one is from councillor Roy Cancel. He's disclosing two personal interests. The first one that family members wrote letters regarding the LDF and the second that he's a member of the protection of wildlife who also wrote in. Disclosure of a personal interest from councillor Peter Osborne, who has written comments regarding the core strategy but has an open mind and will listen to the speeches. Councillor Sandra Forrest has a personal interest as a member of the Barrow Residence Action Group, although they have not responded to the public consultation. Councillor John Sutherington has disclosed a personal interest as an anti-parish councillor who have made comments. Councillor Richard Shepherd has a personal interest as a member of Leicestershire County Council. And councillor Christine Radford has disclosed two personal interests, one as a county councillor and the second that she wrote in personally. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Lenny.
Thank you.
Councillors would press the buttons and we can take them each in turn, it'll be easier, please.
Councillor Lenny.
I'd like to declare a personal interest because I am a Sheffield town councillor and we have made comments about the core strategy, but I am of an open mind and have approached this document only the last week and only selected as a borough councillor on Thursday.
Councillor Duffy.
At the last two county council elections, Babtag asked all the candidates for their opinions in the planning building, which obviously I responded to but from a party prospect. However, I've read all the documentation involved and I've come here tonight with an open mind to listen to all the councillors and the debate before making up my own mind this evening.
Thank you, councillor Duffy.
Thank you.
Councillor Radford.
Yes, I'd like to make it clear that I've come with an open mind and I'm also a member of the Sheffield town councils, they have contributed.
Thank you. Councillor Mark Low.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've made several public statements and replied to over 250 letters.
And councillor Christine Radford disclosed two personal interests, one as a county councillor and the second that she wrote in personally. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Lenny. Or councillor Shaw. Thank you.
Councillors, we'll press the buttons and we can take them all each in turn. It'll be easier, please.
Councillor Lenny.
Declare a personal interest because I am a Sheffield Town Councillor and we have made comments about the core strategy. But I am of an open mind and have approached this document only the last week and only selected as a borough councillor on Thursday.
Councillor Duffy.
At the last two county council elections, Babtag asked all the candidates for their opinions in the planning building, which obviously I responded to but from a party prospect. However, I've read all the documentation involved and I've come here tonight with an open mind to listen to all the councillors and their debates before making up my own mind this evening.
Thank you, councillor Duffy.
Thank you.
Councillor Radford.
Yes, I'd like to make it clear that I've come with an open mind and I'm also a member of the Sheffield Town Council.
Thank you. Councillor Mark Low.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've made several public statements and replied to over 250 letters from concerned residents of Thurston about the core strategy, which has set out my views. I've reached the conclusion that those views are not going to change during the course of the debate tonight. As such, I no longer have an open mind on this issue. After taking advice from officers in accordance with the council's planning code of good practice and as I have predetermined the matter, I will not be taking part in the consideration of the core strategy tonight.
Thank you, councillor Low. Councillor David Snart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a personal interest that I'm a member of the Leicestershire County Council.
Councillor Seaton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Thurston Borough and Parish councillor, I have made several public statements, collected signatures, took part in demonstrations and marches, which has clearly set out my views to this strategy and its possible negative effects on Thurston residents. I have reached the conclusion that those views are not going to change during the course of the debate tonight and I no longer have an open mind on this issue. Again, I have taken advice and in accordance with the council's planning code of good practice, I have predetermined the matter and I will not be taking part in the consideration of the core strategy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Seaton. Councillor Hampson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to declare a personal interest as a Leicestershire County Councillor.
Thank you. Councillor Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to declare a personal interest as a Leicestershire County Councillor and also made comments on the website on the core strategy but they were general comments and I'm here with an open mind.
Thank you, councillor Meyer. Councillor Diane Wise.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I made comments in a personal nature to the website although I'm prepared to look at it with an open.
Thank you very much, councillor Wise. Councillor Maynard Smith.
I have a personal interest as I'm a resident in Rochdale and I have joined a letter petition in rejection response to the core strategy but I have an open mind.
Thank you, councillor Maynard Smith. Councillor Max Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Declare an interest as county councillor and having sent a submission into previous consultations in which I have expressed predispositions but I'm not predetermined.
Thank you very much, councillor Hunt. Councillor Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I could have acted as a county councillor and also as the cabinet member responsible for the reply on behalf of highways and transport but again I have an open.
Thank you, councillor Osborne. Councillor Claire Paul.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm also a town councillor in Sheffield and I have mentioned on the core strategy as well. I have come with an open mind.
Thank you, councillor Paul. Councillor Grimley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to declare a personal interest. I have made comments on the website but I have come here with an open mind.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Steve Smith.
I wish I could say just bit over but I have also made comments but I'm here with an open mind.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Councillor Poland, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the previous two councillors, I have also made public comments but again I've come here with an open mind.
Thank you, councillor Poland. Councillor Sutherington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've already made a disclosure that I'm a member of anti-parish councillor. We've already made comments. I'd just like to say that I am here despite the comments that the parish councillor made with an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sutherington. Councillor Parton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have attended and spoken to members of the Store and Ashby Residence Group. However, over this period I have deliberately not made any comments or submitted anything in writing or in public speaking so I come with an open mind.
Thank you, councillor Parton. Councillor Harley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a member of Thurston Parish Council who have made comments but I come with a total open mind. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harley. Councillor Shergill.
Thank you. I'd like to declare a real interest because I'm on the Barrow Parish Council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Richard Shepherd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for the avoidance of doubt, I am in my view predisposed but not predetermined in my views.
Thank you, councillor Shepherd. Councillor Jane Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having made some public comments in the past, particularly when I was starting for Parliament in 2010, I did make comments but I come here with an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hunt. Councillor Ranson, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I wish to make a statement that I am actually a member of the parish council of Arcon Saw but I've come here with an open mind. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ranson. Councillor Ken Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a deputed member of the Solby Parish Council but I come with an open mind.
Councillor Bevington.
They made no comment.
Thank you, councillor Bevington. Councillor Fryer, did you wish to speak?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I am a member of Barrow Parish Council but I don't believe they made any comments. So I've come with a completely open mind. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fryer. I now call upon Adrian Ward, the monitoring officer of Charmwood Borough Council, to explain the effect of the various categories of interest.
Just for the benefit of councillors and members of the public, councillors who have declared a personal interest can stay in the meeting, participate in the debate and vote. Councillors, and I don't think we had any who declared a personal interest leading to bias would have to leave the meeting and not participate. Councillors who've had a disclosable pecuniary interest, and again I don't believe we have any, would similarly have to leave. And councillors who have declared they are predetermined and don't have an open mind are not participating in the vote or the debate but are allowed to remain in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, business reserved council. Item 3.1, Submission of the Charmwood Local Plan Core Strategy. The local plan core strategy and the legislative framework relating to local development framework is a complex area. It is important that council is able to properly consider and debate this issue. Therefore, I ask for your patience and understanding if there are pauses in the debate while I seek guidance and advice from officers. In particular amendments made to the motion may need to be clarified and the effect of such amendments will need to be considered to determine their impact in terms of moving forward the process so that councillors can be fully aware of the implications before debating them. For the benefit of members of the public, whether present here or watching the webcast, you should have either in hard copy or available on our website a copy of the agenda for this meeting which includes on page four a simple guide and diagram of the council's procedures. Pages five to seven provide more detail on the procedures. A report which provides an overview in part A of the nature of the decision council is being asked to consider with more details in part B from page six. Eighteen appendices labelled A through to R. These appendices are all listed giving the number and title at the end of part B of the main report. I hope you've all got that.
Do you right? The right time to do this. I'd like to raise a point of order that whilst members of the public and the press have had all the documents that you outlined, they have not had the document that we have been given as councillors which is labelled this document contains sensitive information not for circulation outside Charmwood Borough Council and outlines the report from the inspector that we hired to preview the plan. And I think that should have been made public and to the press and that's a point of legality.
If you will wait a moment, councillor Hunt, I will seek clarification on that point. Councillor Hunt, I refer you to the council's constitution and I will read what it says. A councillor can raise a point of order at any time. The mayor will hear a point of order immediately. A point of order must be about the law or a full council procedure being broken. The councillor must say which law or procedure is being broken and how. The mayor may consider the chief executive's advice when deciding on a point of order and the mayor's decision will be final. My advice, councillor Hunt, is that you have not made it clear what law or full council procedure is being broken. I'm happy to give you the opportunity to clarify. Councillor Hunt, Adrian Ward, our monitoring officer, does not consider what you have raised to be a point of order but he is prepared to offer you an explanation and I call upon Adrian Ward to do so now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To clarify, particularly for members of the public, there was an informal internal meeting with a planning inspector in a purely non-official capacity. It's not part of the formal process for considering the core strategy. An internal document was produced that has been circulated to councillors because a councillor asked to see that document and we thought it was right that all other councillors should have the same opportunity. We have not made that document public because it was an informal meeting and it is not part of the formal process for considering the core strategy that you're being asked as councillors to vote on and debate this evening.
Thank you. I'm prepared to give you the opportunity to respond, councillor Hunt. Thank you, councillor Hunt. If I may continue now. Councillor's speeches are time limited and the time is displayed on the screen. In front of me are a set of, well, we call them traffic lights which initially display green and when there is 30 seconds left on a three-minute time limit and one minute left on a five-minute time limit, the amber light shows. The red light shows when the time allowed is up. As we go through the meeting, you will see for yourself how it works. I now call on councillor Vardy, Cabinet Lead Member for Planning and Sustainability, to propose the motion that the Charmwood Local Plan Core Strategy be submitted to the Secretary of State for an examination in public. Councillor Vardy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the first item is to comply with section 20 of the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act 2004 and regulation 22 of the Town and Country Planning Local Development England Regulations 2004.
Councillor Vardy, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I don't think you've pressed your microphone.
Oh, I did.
Right, I do beg your pardon. Would you like to start again?
Excite everybody, yes. Okay. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. First item is to comply with section 20 of the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act 2004 and regulation 22 of the Town and Country Planning Local Development England Regulations 2012. I move that the Charmwood Local Plan Core Strategy and supporting documents listed in appendix A to the report of the chief executive be submitted to the Secretary of State so that it can be examined under section 20 of the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act 2004. Proposition two is to ensure that any minor amendments and corrections can be made to the core strategy and its supporting documents prior to submission. I move that the schedule of minor changes in appendix J to the report of the chief executive be noted and the head of planning and regeneration be given delegated authority in consultation with the lead member for planning and regeneration to make any further minor amendments and corrections to the core strategy and supporting documents prior to submission. Item three is to ensure that the additional parts of the sustainability appraisal have been subject to public consultation before the core strategy is examined in public. I move that the supplementary paper to the sustainability appraisal attached in appendix D to the report of the chief executive be published for six weeks of public consultation after the core strategy is submitted and any comments received be submitted to the Secretary of State as part of the examination process. And four, to ensure the housing topic paper includes the most up-to-date expression of the Borough Council's objectively assessed needs to assist the inspector's understanding of the council's housing evidence. I move that the head of the planning and regeneration be given delegated authority to amend the housing topic paper dated April 2012/2013 to incorporate the findings of the Charmwood Housing Requirement Study dated October 2013 as attached in appendix N of the report of the chief executive and in consultation with the lead member of planning and regeneration and to submit this to the Secretary of State as a further supporting document to the core strategy.
Thirty seconds left.
And finally, that these propositions are dealt with by way of a named vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Vardy. I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Can I support the named vote?
Certainly, because I am about to call on you councillors later to second the motion that the Charmwood Local Plan Core Strategy be submitted to the Secretary of State for an examination in public.
Second the motion which has just been moved by councillor Vardy and reserve my remarks.
Thank you very much, councillor Slater. Councillors, the call for a name vote has been proposed and seconded, so therefore there will be a named or recorded vote. Thank you. If any councillors would like to speak, would you please now press your button? I call on Joel Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, Madam Mayor, I want to say thank you to all the officers who worked hard on this core strategy. They're putting a lot of time and effort, and that should be rightly noted. Turning to the core strategy itself before us, it certainly is a hefty document, especially when you look at all the supporting appendices. I am disappointed that it has taken so long for it to arrive at full council. I thought this was going to be presented to us to make a decision back in 2008, and really, it should have been, but only the party opposite can truly say why they keep it into touch for so long. So here we are, five years later, scrabbling yet the core strategy in place. However, it's not about getting any old core strategy, Madam Mayor, in place, but one that is truly reflective of the opinion of the people of the borough, and one that is fully thought through, sustainable and deliverable, and of a fall sound under inspection. Little of it has changed since I first saw the first draft, and I believe the administration have not done enough in the way of actively listening to the public, and what comments that they have received, they have not brought it through into the plan. They still want to build thousands of homes west of Loughborough, they still want to build thousands of homes in Berkeley and Thurston. In fact, they have added North Berstall Roethly and Shetford to the tally. Indeed, I have put alternative sites for the urban extensions through scrutiny, but have been constantly knocked back and told that there was no developed interest in promoting any of those sites. So truly, it makes me wonder who really is in control of the direction of this core strategy. I am still to be convinced that what is put before us is the best that can be produced. As I read through it, I have doubts about the location of the sites for housing, doubt about the build rate and the provision for affordable housing, especially in rural areas. I have doubts about the scale of the infrastructure required and the cost, especially in these economically constrained times. I could go on, however, I am sure these worries are shared by others in the hall. I and colleagues have put these questions to lead members and to officers, and have yet to receive a satisfactory reply to many of the questions. I will be interested to hear what other members have to say, especially those members that are directly affected by the areas of growth. Madam Mayor, as I have said, I have not fully made up my mind, but currently...
Thirty seconds, councillor Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have not fully made up my mind, but currently, unless answers are found in this meeting, I am of the opinion of rejecting this motion and asking councillors to do so, but I leave it to colleagues to persuade me otherwise. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor Meyer. I call on councillor Hillary Fryer, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This has been looked at since 2004, when it first came. This is one of the most important things, probably the most important thing, since 2003, when I was elected to this council, that I've ever had to make a decision on. I am delighted to see that at long last, after an awful lot of work, we have a document, many documents, to send to the Secretary of State to ask for a public inquiry. This means there's still a lot more consultation to be done. It also gives the Secretary of State a chance to have a really good look at our plan and see if there is any improvements he can also make to it. It is most important that development in this borough is sustainable, has the infrastructure, and is also something that when none of us in this room are still here, that our grandchildren and great-grandchildren can be very proud of what we have done. The final decisions on the quality, the numbers, and where they will be, and how they will be built, is left to the planning department and the plans committee of this council. We can demand and ask for high standards. Our late departed past leader, councillor Mike Preston, always said to us, 'There is no need for bad development. Trees can be left, clerks can be made, it is up to us to do it.' I have gone through this, as you can see, I have read it. The village I represent, Barrow and Salby West, since 2004, we have had over a thousand houses built with no improvement on the infrastructure at all. This gives us a chance to make sure that this plan comes with full and complete infrastructure. Please don't interrupt, councillor Hunt, we aren't interrupting your speakers. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I have come with an open mind, but I have also read all the documents, and I really do feel that if this doesn't pass by tonight, when we've all discussed it...
Thirty seconds, councillor Fryer.
I'm not quite sure where we will be going. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fryer. Councillor Jane Lenny, please.
Am I on? Okay. I've read through as much of the core strategy as I could since last Thursday night, but I've had to read just summaries along the way, so pardon me if I'm not up to scratch for all of you. I fully understand the housing need in Charmwood and the need for a core strategy for development, but reading through core strategy document, it seems that it will lead to a decline in services and infrastructure, and it seems to be an inevitable result, which through the previous incarnations of the core strategy have reduced as it goes along. Wider perspective since 2004 has shown that the two main areas of development are on land which the landowners, agents and development want to develop, not what Charmwood wants to typically develop. For example, Shetford is described as a sustainable urban extension of Loughborough, but it isn't really. We've seen the business prosperity of the town decline for decades. Every business site that's been closed has been replaced by a housing development, and there is inadequate funding or space for additional services required by the new residents of those new houses. The contribution of funding towards the infrastructure is becoming a bit of a hot potato now between the council and the developers. But for every service that isn't funded by the developers, we're suffering road accidents, traffic jams and potholes, floods, insufficient places in your closest schools, increased waiting in health services, and your journeys to work or for leisure and health services taking longer. This is a direct cost to the public because they'll have to pay for it in their income tax, their council tax, house and car insurance, water and sewerage bills because the flooding's going to affect that, car fuel and bus fares, and their own valuable time and health. So we are paying for the services that aren't provided or minimized, that we need more of, and the developers' business growth will not benefit anybody in Charmwood. The costs of infrastructure to support development are being passed from an unwilling developer or two to an equally unwilling government...
Thirty seconds.
...and underfunded councils, highways and environment agencies. Charmwood has the power to compulsorily purchase land and make a good strategy, but they can't afford to do so, and I feel that this should be funded through central government.
Thank you, councillor Lenny. Councillor Stephen Hampson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I joined this council in April 2005, might have been May. And many administrations have been in control since then, and the decision has been left with the present administration. What really needs to be determined is that what has changed since December, sorry, yes, December 2005, when the administration offered, when the people that were in administration sitting opposite...
Excuse me, can we have one meeting? Can we have... No, come on, be fair. You will expect people to listen to you, councillor Hunt, please. Please continue, councillor Hampson.
Whether members or officers are going to speak or not, I don't know, but if they are, I would like to be informed what has changed since December 2005, when they had meetings with the Lord Mayor of Leicester, and they accepted that the expansion of the Leicester Core Strategy would be into our borough. This has been fundamental, everything that I've heard over the last 10 years on this subject, all starts from that Leicester is not prepared to take its own housing requirements, and that the people of Anthony, and the people, I'll say, in the south of this borough, have had to take the hit on the housing. That's the... I want to know what's changed. Moving on from that, I'd like to thank the officers for the work that they've done, all of it, probably should have read it all. And I can't find anything in there yet that needs to be renounced, and I'm sure that councillors will be making appropriate decisions. What we really must bear in mind, though, is what councillor Fryer said earlier. We're preparing a plan for the future of the borough, for the future of our children and our grandchildren moving into the borough. Do we want to answer their queries saying, 'Did you create the houses?'. The government want the houses, we've been given a bad deal from the government, in my view, but we've been given that deal, we are going to supply the houses, and I'm, at this moment in time, content with what the officers have described.
Thank you, councillor Hampson. Councillor Dukes, I owe you an apology. I believe you wish to make a point of order.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm saddened when an elected member with the experience of councillor Hunt questions the authority of the mayor in running this meeting.
I'm a big girl, councillor Dukes. I thank you. I thank you for your... I thank you for your concern, and I'm very appreciative of it. What can I say? There isn't a man on the planet who has been yet born that could intimidate me, so thank you for your concern, but don't worry. Thank you. I now have councillor Steve Smith, thank you.
I believe that every Borough councillor here today will recognise the need for a strategic plan. As one of the Charm Borough councillors, Dithley and Haven, I recognise the damage that poorly planned developments can have, other than having had three bit developments approved in the last two years, it's not just the south of the borough, councillor Hampson, which have increased the size of the village by 25%, always waiting for this delayed core strategy presented. However, the need for a plan does not remove or lessen the necessity for this to be the right plan. The wrong plan is not better than no plan at all. Appendix C of the draft, Charm Core Strategy, states that the national planning policy framework should include strategic policies to deliver conservation and enhancement of the natural and historic environment, including the landscape. English Heritage have submitted representations about the impact of the Garranagh SUE on Garranagh Historic Park and Gardens. Submitting a core strategy that has such serious concerns over the conservation and enhancement of the natural and historic environment is, to me, contrary to the national planning policy framework. Strategic Object of 12 states that the plan should maintain and enhance the range of ecological sites, habitats and species found in Charmwood. However, this plan seeks to build almost exclusively on greenfield sites. Building on these sites removes the possibility of maintaining habitats and species in these areas, removing the places for these species to live. Whilst the plan states that we cannot fulfil the plan solely on brownfield sites due to the limited availability, this does not justify why it has almost completely ignored them. The only mention being in 4.39, which states that an expectation that brownfield sites will be built on, but with no clear direction as to how this will happen. Strategic Object of 9 states that the plan should protect the identity of the borough's locally distinctive towns, villages and neighbourhoods. Clearly, this plan cannot consider Haven a distinctive village, as it effectively clears the way for it to be amalgamated into Loughborough and Shetford. On page 8 of the report from the Chief Executive, Part 1.8 states that the pre-submission should be the best and final offer. I would dispute that this is the best offer, and that the cost of this wrong plan for the current or future generations of this borough, which I love, is a price too high to pay. Finally, I believe it is worth noting that from the intensity of public feeling shown in the results from numerous consultations and responses planned by local communities...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. It's not hard to draw the conclusion the council has had no real interest in listening to the views of the people most affected. But I come here with an open mind and am ready to hear. Pardon, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. I call on councillor Betty Newton, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the most important decision this council will take, not just for the lifetime of the council, but for many years to come. What we decide tonight will determine the long-term development of this borough and how it affects each of the communities we represent. For some, this strategy will mean bloom, but for others, it will spell bright light. This is called a core strategy, but it isn't a strategy, it's a political fix. It has no long-term vision, and it says nothing as to what happens after the plan expires. It used to be called the local plan, and rightly so, because in the past it was about the development of local communities, a rise up through local consent. This strategy doesn't. It has split this borough. It has set parish against parish, town against country, community against community. There's no consensus on this strategy, and there never will be. But the administration knows all this, as the plan has been rejected time and again in previous consultations. However, instead of taking a fresh approach, this administration is attempting to ride rucksard over communities such as Haven and Dithley, communities which both Steve and I are proud to represent. Well, let me tell you, these communities and others such as Shetford have been round long before doomsday, and they will fight you all the way to the examination in public and further to retain their identities and their heritage, and I will be supporting them. Make no mistake, if this strategy is passed, all of these communities will merge into the urban sprawl of Aguirre and Loughborough, an urban sprawl of something your government says it doesn't want to see. We will lose green wedges, the lungs of our borough, our footpath, bridle path and cyclopath. We are building on prime agricultural site, disrupting our wildlife, ruining our architectural heritage and scouring one of the most beautiful landscapes in this area forever. And in return, the strategy offers yet more traffic congestion, more pollution, increased flooding, increased pressure on vital services, and all with very few guaranteed measures to mitigate the untold harm this strategy will cause. It doesn't have to be like this. There are exciting alternatives, such as building to the east of Loughborough...
Thirty seconds.
Concepts such as the garden city approach, brownfield sites for hazardous housing, it could be so different, and it could be done with consent of all the people of the borough. It's not too late, it does take courage. I'm wholly in favour of having a core strategy, but I think this is not the right core strategy. I would urge the party opposite to reconsider. Thank you.
I call upon... Thank you. I call upon councillor Patrick Ewell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Many years of my life I worked under the New Towns Act, responsible for the building of Milton Keynes, Telford and many other new towns. I mention this to show that I do acknowledge, I do accept, I do agree that development can often change and sometimes destroy the English countryside. But I also believe that urban development can be justified and for three reasons. First, there is an acute housing shortage. Only one in five new homes are affordable for the average family. Some 17,380 new homes is estimated will be needed in Charmwood by 2028. Second, new development provides new jobs, hundreds of jobs, not just during building, but afterwards to service new housing. And thirdly, Loughborough is an expanding university town and benefits enormously from that university. If I may quote councillor Pacey, students do not come in out of space. In other words, they need housing. I would list myself five requirements for this housing and I would look to the planning authority at county council and a borough council level to try to meet these requirements. First, housing, purchase or rent should be as affordable as possible. Now, I do believe that planning discipline can at least influence, despite the market, this kind of result. Second, housing should be as accessible as possible. With proper liaison, bus service providers, people must be able to get to shops. And thirdly, on the matter of shops, there should be a chemist or a pharmacist written and manipulated in the plan. And fourthly, the area must be properly serviced, particularly in medical sense, with doctors' surgery available.
Thirty seconds.
Finally, there must be some kind of community centre, some meeting place where people can socialise and in particular where the voluntary sector can operate from. As far as I can see, all these requirements are contained, they're carried out in this core strategy and I commend it to the meeting.
Thank you councillor, thank you councillor Ewell. Councillor Daniel Grimley, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed person, Hamilton Sue, contained within the core strategy, crosses into Quenib Ward, which I represent. I do have concerns about the effect of four and a half thousand houses on the area, especially to the villages of Barkby and Barkby Thor. I understand that the housing allocations came out of previous agreements between Charmwood and Leicester City Council in 2006. I also have concerns that if there's no core strategy put in place, then we have a prospect of a developers free for all within the borough. And this will affect villages that are in my area, Quenib, South Crosombe, Beebe and also Barkby Village Centre itself possibly could be, come into a larger development. Also, obviously, this would affect the whole of the villages within the borough. Over the last few weeks, I've had a lot of correspondence and the key question that's been raised by local residents has been questions over the satetowners of the public consultations since 2008 and the weight given to these. I would ask that this is an issue that is considered tonight as part of the meeting. And I would also ask that if the members agree for the core strategy to be submitted to the Secretary of State, that this is a question that the inspector looks at at the earliest opportunity. In fact, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Grimley. I call on councillor David Snark, please.
Madam Mayor, conversations with many local residents inevitably get to the subject of planning. The same question seems to arise. Why are we allowing so many dwellings to be built without the necessary infrastructure? Why should we stand idly by and let this happen, especially in some local areas where highways are at full capacity without any extra development? In my view, they have some justification in their concerns. My answer centers around, there are two areas of planning we need to address to overcome their concern. Firstly, we need to have evidence-led core strategy and then make sure we deliver the necessary number of dwellings within that strategy. It's no good carrying on as we are with piecemeal planning applications coming forward, which when added together cause serious infrastructure issues within a local area. Perhaps it would be good to allude to what has happened since 2006, when this plan started, to the 31st of March this year. Thirty-eight percent of housing, 1,920 completions in Charmwood have been built in service centres, such as Anstey, Barrow, Sylby, Rochley and Cyton. This with very little infrastructure improvements to the highway. These numbers are significant, especially when you look at figures showing 1,365 dwellings have been granted planning permission since April 2013, only 130 of these in Loughborough. The remaining are gaining service centres or other settlements. This, I believe, illustrates how much development has been focused towards rural settlements in the last few years. I also note, we have 3,000 dwellings on the Aston Green site permitted by city council, close to the parish of Thirkeston, right on our border. Therefore, Madam Mayor, I believe this shows without doubt the need for an evidence-led core strategy and I agree with the statement that the council has discharged its duty in relation to the preparation of this core strategy and the evidence base under which it's intended. In conclusion, I am pleased we have developed a core strategy in which, in my view, we can have confidence to be submitted to the Secretary of State for examination in public. The alternative is to carry on as we are with piecemeal development, with very little control over the outcome, and this core strategy will surely give this council more control of the planning decisions. For me, it was good to see the Policy Scrutiny Committee, made up of all members of this council, whatever colour, was satisfied with the appropriate methods and tools that had been used in developing the core strategy. We as members need to have confidence in our planning officers who have developed this evidence-led core strategy, which I believe once again gives control to these planning decisions of this council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Snark. I call upon councillor Maryd Raycott, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a number of concerns regarding this document. First, which I think is the fundamental problem, is that the whole of the developments or most of the developments being proposed is that it's added to existing settlements. And the pressures that will be put on local residents, I feel, are very genuine concerns and have been raised throughout the consultation. The reason why I think people are losing hope with the planning process, they feel they're not being listened to, whatever the concerns they raised, it isn't heard. And I wish to speak particularly about Appendix R, which is the infrastructure delivery plan. And with my calculator, Madam Mayor, I have been through the document and if you, as a short space of time that I have, can only refer to the headlines in the report. Transport improvements will cost over £45 million. Schools, we will require seven more schools in Charmwood if this development goes ahead. £66 million plus estimated. I don't know where any of this money is going to come from. Certainly, I don't think the council has the money. Central governments are not going to come up with the money. And regarding schools, as we no longer seem to have state schools anymore, I wonder where that money is going to come from. Health service is looking at almost £5 million will be needed to cope with the extra people. In the document, it talks about town centre improvements, but they're not costed. It's got to be considered alongside it, Madam Mayor. They will be needing extra car parks, extra highway improvements, lots if we are going to get all of this development. Community facilities, talks about open spaces and community centres being needed. From my experience, these come at the bottom of any developer contributions, Madam Mayor. Local people do not get community centres built or open spaces provided. Ambulance service, wait and see are their comments.
Thirty seconds.
It is bound to impact. The police will require 74 extra staff and all the equipment totaling nearly £5 million. Hundreds of police officers are losing their jobs, yet they're expected to come up with 74 more. Utilities will require a new substation, £7 million. We will be paying on top of our now extortionate energy bills for this substation. Grand total, £142 million. I do not believe the infrastructure will be delivered and that is my concern, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Raycott. Councillor Anne Williams, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm disappointed that the views of residents in Leicestershire County Council, who both asked for developments in the east of Loughborough, were not listened to. I don't believe that the Coates development, east of Loughborough, has been sufficiently explored. The development would provide a new garden suburb for 975 homes, providing 30% affordable homes, a range of tenure types and sizes of homes, extra care housing that meets the needs of our aging population, up to five hectares of employment land, a primary school, a local centre including shops and a supermarket, and a range of non-retail and community facilities and services included in the community centre. It would also provide a bypass for Coates Village, which would join communities currently split by the A60. One of the reasons for rejection given in the sustainability appraisal report was because of Coates' location, stating that it is dislocated from the town and being physically detached makes facilities less accessible to priority neighbourhoods without cars. Yet, Coates is 2.8 kilometres from the town centre and two kilometres from the train station. It's closer to Loughborough town centre than a large part of the proposed Garranen development. The transport strategy for the proposals is based on a public transport approach with changes and improvements to existing local bus services to enable easy access to Loughborough. There are a number of bus services operating along the A60. New and improved cycling and walking routes would be provided. The majority of the urban area is within a 15-minute cycle ride and a 20-minute walk from the railway station. Therefore, facilities will be accessible to priority neighbourhoods without cars. The Sustainable Appraisal Supplementary Report states that development will be in close proximity to a medieval village, a site of specific scientific interest and two local wildlife sites, though its significant negative effect was identified. Unresolved flood risk issues were also cited. Yet, the Coates proposal sets out to protect historic and archaeological features, including the setting of Coates' medieval village and protect and enhance existing wildlife corridors.
Thirty seconds.
And where appropriate, provide new corridors to create coherent biodiversity network. It will also provide appropriate sustainable drainage systems and flood alleviation. If this option had been chosen, could this have reduced development in other areas? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Williams. Councillor Tom Barclay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight as a council, we need to consider the plan developed by our officers and members over a period of nine years. A plan which is required by the Secretary of State and Planning Inspector to meet detailed, demanding and specific criteria. Charmwood Borough Council is required by government to produce a plan to deliver 10,000 new homes before 2028. It is not optional but mandatory. The plan must be positively prepared. In other words, meet objectively assessed development and infrastructure requirements. Be justified, be the most appropriate strategy when considered against reasonable alternatives, based on hard evidence, not on speculation or surmise. It must be effective, be deliverable over the planned period of 15 years and consistent with the national planning policy. So it must be the best option plan to deliver the housing needs of this borough and all its residents, given the changing demographic profile of the borough. We have received up-to-date independent analysis to support the plan within the last four weeks as regards housing needs within this borough. The plan must deliver schools, medical facilities, roads, green spaces, recreational facilities to support our generation and the generations to come. A plan for the future to ensure the legacy we leave will provide the best options for future generations in terms of housing, infrastructure, economic growth, employment opportunities and the environment. I have received communication from residents in my ward expressing support. Likewise, I have received communication expressing concern. This plan, if agreed, will be submitted to the Secretary of State and Planning Inspector for further vigorous, challenging inspection. We are not approving this plan. All concerns raised, no matter what they are, will be considered and independently examined.
Thirty seconds.
It is our, it is our, it is considered, our offices have not, if it is considered, our offices have not met the exacting criteria, it will not be approved. However, I believe the professionalism and dedication of our officers who have showed this demanding criteria have been met in the main by this plan. Residents in favour of the plan urgently want it put in place so we can take back control of planning within our borough and stop ad hoc and unsuitable development which will occur. Thank you.
Thank you. I call upon councillor Max Hunt, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, apologies for my earlier intervention. It seems to me that the best speeches have been made against this plan, but the way in which it's being defended is to say, well, it's better to have this plan than these, as councillor Snark said, small developments with very little control. Well, actually, what we've got tonight are very big developments with very little control because, because you've got absolutely no firm information about the details as councillor Draycott's outlined of how much it's going to cost and who's going to pay for it, for one. Secondly, you've got a large number of planning details which have yet to be determined and consultations that have yet to be resolved, which our planning officers have told us will not be resolved and not be approached to be resolved before it goes to the public inquiry. If it goes to public inquiry, because we already know, don't we, that the developers are waiting for this meeting, the moment this meeting's over, they will put in their planning applications before it goes even to the Secretary of State. So we're looking at wildfire applications from large developers for large schemes over which we will have ultimately little control for the reasons outlined. As far as consultations concerned, and Hillary referred to that, we've had three major consultations and each time there's been massive opposition, starting with the one that we led and then withdrew. But every consultation that's been held has put forward a large number of constructive alternatives, including Coates, which has been referred to several times, an excellent, an excellent proposition in my view. But at every stage, the administration over there has not altered the plan one jot. Perhaps a little bit around Barkby here and there, but fundamentally, consultations are there to be listened to and to amend the plan. We don't amend the plan at all, they're not a consultation, the inspector will tell you that. As far as the statutory consultations are concerned, that's organisations like Natural England and English Heritage. English Heritage have written eleven pages here, I've got them here, of criticism. County Council has as well, actually, but not on the same point. Now, the English Heritage objections are really telling us that this plan betrays Garrondon Park. Now, Garrondon Park is a listed, a registered landscape, grade two landscape in Darden.
Thirty seconds.
Going, going, going back many generations back to the restoration originators of the plan. So that, that is a landscape that this plan betrays. And what I'm saying tonight is that if you want to be part of that betrayal, vote for the resolution. If you don't want to betray this borough, then oppose it.
Councillor Richard Shepherd, please. Oh, so councillor Shepherd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems to me that the choice this evening, the decision to be made, is a straightforward one between, do we take the next step towards gaining a degree of control over development, or do we allow what many would call the current free-for-all just to carry on? I accept that a bad plan is probably worth no plan at all. Nor do I claim that this plan is perfect. My understanding is that examinations in public will often find elements of a plan unsound, but the inspector will advise some things can be done to make it sound. Some would say, go on doing more research, go on doing more evidence gathering. We have been spending years against a background of rising public impatience of gathering information and doing exhaustive analysis. Some members say that we are, that we are ignoring consultation. Not to agree with a consultation is not the same thing as ignoring it. The point is to analyse what the consultation says and to weigh up the evidence. We shall vary in our views about what the evidence tells us in this plan. For my part, I find the evidence, by and large, conclusive in pointing to the decisions that have been suggested. But I accept that an inspector will, if we agree, tonight to submit it, examine it rigorously in public, and what's more, will also examine all those objections and counter-suggestions. And areas that have been mentioned will, I'm sure, get their fair share of a hearing at an examination in public. So really, Madam Mayor, this wealth of detail before us actually asks us to make a straightforward decision this evening. Do we feel confident that we have, by and large, with some imperfections, but a document that we judge is now worthy of submission? In my view, we have, others accept, will differ, but in my view, we have.
Thirty seconds.
Not a perfect document, but one worthy of submission, and one which takes us one more bicycle step along that road to gaining control. Because if we don't do that, nobody else will help us to gain control. I therefore, Madam Mayor, am prepared now to vote for submission of this document.
Thank you, councillor Shepherd. Councillor Robert Sharp, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Having witnessed a number of unwanted planning applications in my ward, I fully support the need for a core strategy put in place as quickly as possible to stop developers running roughshod through this borough. But such a strategy has to command public support. That is putting the right houses in the right place, and on this score, it seems we are not in good shape. Many colleagues have spoken about the right places, and I won't repeat those arguments. So I will use my limited time to concentrate on the delivery of affordable homes. This current document estimates its affordable housing need based upon two thousand and six data, before the financial crash. Since that date, all experts have spoken about the massive increase in the need for affordable homes, describing it as a national crisis. I've spent the last two years challenging the age of the housing data, and yet it was only days before this meeting that a partial updating of those numbers was rushed out to councillors. A ninety-six-page document issued with no internal or public scrutiny, and no wonder. The document states that the affordable housing backlog of two thousand four hundred and twenty-two that was reported to Cabinet in April of this year had shrunk to seven hundred and thirty-nine by October, a two-thirds reduction in only six months, and three times the level of housing, affordable housing, we have built in the last five years. To make one thousand six hundred and eighty-three families waiting for a home magically disappear suggests a report should have been written by J K Rowling rather than J G Consulting. And so I ask the lead member to allow full scrutiny of this report before the core strategy is submitted. The affordable housing numbers are barely credible, and in my view, cast serious doubt as to whether this plan is sound. And why is this important? If the core strategy, if core strategy is unsound and fails inspection, we will be left with an extended period where developers have free range to put in more unwanted applications, a state that is far worse than a short delay to get the right strategy to an inspector. If we build too few affordable homes, residents would have sacrificed land for development, but their children and grandchildren would not be able to afford to buy or rent.
Thirty seconds.
And I suggest that is a legacy that people may look back from in two thousand and twenty-eight. And if the number of affordable homes required are higher than make, it will make sites where affordable housing is harder to achieve, such as thermostat and Shepshed unsustainable. I urge the lead member to hold back from submitting the core strategy until the updated strategic housing data is available early in the new year, so we can be sure we are delivering the homes we need.
Time up.
In the right places. If it fails to do that, I cannot support this plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sharp. Councillor Maynard Smith, please.
Madam Mayor, whilst I understand fully the need for new housing, especially affordable housing, and I fully understand the need for a core strategy to coordinate where spaces are built on, and I fully understand, being a resident of a grocery that nobody likes or wants to change on their doorstep, I want to raise, as many of my colleagues have done, the issue of sustainability of infrastructure. How many people here struggle to get doctor's appointments on the day that they need them? How many people in some of the villages struggle to actually register with surgeries in their village, Mount Sorrel being a prime example of that? I'd also like to raise two key sustainability issues, one of education, the fragmentation of education and schooling that is currently our system. I worry that the core strategy will not address that, because the county council now has a limited role in commissioning schools with the coalition's government's education policy. I'm worried that with the current dip in secondary demographics, the county council say to developers, no, there's no need for school here. And when the demographics change and all of a sudden the schools need to be built, the developers are long gone, so who will fit the foot to the bill? I worry about poverty, especially as I represent Hastingsborough, where there are pockets of deprivation. There seems to be, in this core strategy, no real plan for improving any area of real deprivation. Hastings Ward gets a mention for tourism, for the Bell Foundry, for the Great Central Railway, which are truly wonderful things that we should cherish. But what about real jobs? Quality housing in that ward, provision for young people, playgrounds, youth clubs, training? I do not believe that the key, the core strategy will address those issues. I am yet to be convinced, in all that I'm hearing this evening, that the core strategy will be sustainable in terms of infrastructure, whether the infrastructure needed is likely to happen, or even within the council's control to deliver, especially in the area of education. I refute the assertion that urban extensions will benefit the existing community as is stated in the core strategy. And I feel that there is little understanding in the core strategies that many areas do not need more housing to maintain their facilities. It will merely overstretch them to the detriment of the residents currently there and the residents of the future.
Thank you, councillor Maynard Smith. Councillor Christine Radford, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I came in nothing tight because I wanted to keep an open mind, and I am mindful that we need a plan, but I'm also concerned that the residents of Shepshed concerns have not been addressed, especially regarding the amount of development being looked at west of Shepshed. No infrastructure seems to have been addressed for the proposed housing in Shepshed. No land has been set aside for schools, doctors, business or playing fields. Shepshed Town Centre, no costing. Regarding the SUE guarantee in the state area, no guarantee has been given about where the money is coming from to safeguard the park and its heritage. I also think that not enough thought has been given to brownfield sites such as Wynes Ward Aerodrome. We keep hearing that no developer has come forward, but if they keep being told that this will not get permission, then they do not come forward. Nor the Coates area has been fully supported, reported upon, which was mentioned about this site, and I fully support what was said about that. Yes, we need a plan, especially as we need to stop further development in Shepshed. We have had over a thousand in the past year. But I do not think that this is the right plan, and what has happened to localism? What will happen to the wildlife, to the footpath, and to the rights of way? I have a number of residents getting in touch with me and asking me to vote against this core strategy. I've told them I've got an open mind. I have not, I've received one resident telling me to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Radford. Councillor Marian Smith, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We all recognise the need for a core strategy to be approved as soon as possible, but it has to be sound for approval by the inspector. It has to be as fair as possible for our residents but accepting the housing needs for the future, two issues, houses in multiple occupation and the Article Four direction. Southfields and Storewards in Loughborough have had neighbourhoods totally changed, some say ruined, by unrestricted changes to being housed in multiple occupation over previous years. Now we have no balanced communities, rundown houses, antisocial behaviour, rubbish, loss of a local school, and isolation of remaining families and the elderly. There's little mention of this in the core strategy, in fact, two sentences. We have mention of a supplementary planning document, this need to have a very transparent mathematical system understandable for everyone how houses in multiple occupation can be applied for, approved or refused, instead of the present confusing system. Affordable housing might concern us again on top of others. In the planning development, it states, we are seeking thirty percent affordable homes to meet local needs, not requiring, as in many other statements. Those of us on planning committee know we do not get the required number of affordable homes in some cases because of other issues. So how will this affect our projected figures? And so how can we actually guarantee providing the necessary required homes of the type we need, not just building the type the developers can make the most profit out of? Again, in my ward, a planning commission some years ago was granted for forty-one affordable sheltered bungalows within a couple of hundred metres from the marketplace. Now this has recently changed to thirty-nine houses twelve affordable, not what local residents actually wanted. I'm worried about there being no actual control on this in the core strategy. We need, as the council deciding these things, to be able to control what we need, not just what developers will give us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. I call on councillor Claire Paul, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Identity of Shepshed, Garrondon Green Wedge equals Sue of the core strategy. Shepshed's identity should be separated from Loughborough. Shepshed is not a subregional centre. Few services, poor economical centres and sensors. Shepshed people must travel out of town for work, live shopping and leisure. More houses proposed in Shepshed part of Garrondon at five hundred homes west of Shepshed. Permission, three hundred and sixty-three homes within the further of six hundred and twenty-four in west of Shepshed. Shepshed has already had made, made its contribution to housing cramps of the borough. More housing sitment in the regeneration of Shepshed. Hundreds of new houses, but shops and services have declined. No evidence that more houses lead to the regeneration of Shepshed. Shepshed needs more affordable housing, but not at any cost of the Shepshed residents. Traffic congestion, Garrondon and the west of Shepshed proposal means sufficient extra traffic in and around Shepshed. No more new roads for Shepshed guaranteed in the core strategy. Public transport proposed congestion reduces to bus submissions and services, and pensions concessions scheme makes it this fault of hope. Infrastructure, guarantee development shows primary schools, shops and community centres and roads, and of affordable housing, but current economic climate, unlikely developments would guarantee infrastructure required by the core strategy. West of Shepshed development, a near to sustainable level of existing schools, DPs, dentists, local schools and Shepshed narrow roads, developers unlikely. Environmental considerations, development in the core strategy on the countryside and the agricultural, what's it, agricultural land contributes since the UK food security, Garrondon heritage sites, agricultural merit and parks, leisure and recreation facilities for walking and horse riding. Flooding for development, brooks.
Thirty seconds.
Already flooded with existing housing in the area such as the Black Rock. Shepshed have problems with sewage in flooding. Alternative, don't believe proposed core strategy includes full annihilation or other options. Don't believe in the core strategy up to the date of the government policy on the planning or the localism film. I believe the core strategy, the development proposal of North Loughborough and Shepshed should be rejected.
Time up. Thank you, councillor Paul. I call upon councillor Peter Osborne, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two interesting speeches from Ricky Shepherd and from Robert Sharp. Everybody agrees we want a core strategy, but the question is, is this core strategy, is this draft sound? J G Consulting, you have their reports, explain that the S M R should form the key part of the evidence base. Officers admit that the S M R figures are out of date, and the wider HMA group, including Charmwood, have agreed two weeks ago to prepare a new S M R. And I should add that the Hearn report, that has an E M Hearn report, is no substitute for a properly prepared assessment. No amount of work done with the J G Consulting report, which has been talked about of amending the figures, none of that passes the test of showing how the outcomes are achieved in cooperation, nor does it pass the test of the duty of cooperation. Both of these are key. The inspector won't go and look at anything else unless you pass those two tests in the first instance. Going to remind you that, and again, it's evidence in front of you, that Hugh Edwards of Barton Wilmore Planning Consultants quoted in an article in Planning Magazine, eighteen for this month, saying that the planning inspectorate had been taking a much sterner line. There had been a transitional period in the first year following the introduction of the NTPF, in which inspectors were finding plans sound, subject to an early review, even though they had not met the duty or housing need requirements. That transition period is finished. All the inspectors are taking a much sterner, straightforward line. S M R figures have to be correct. If you don't believe me, I can tell you, this year of ten councils, because their S M R figures weren't up to date, they've been rejected. North Northants, Dalvedales, Coventry, Tamworth, North Warwickshire, Waverley. North Northants, Dalvedales, Coventry, Tamworth, North Warwickshire, Waverley, Kirklees, Tharrock and nearer to home, North West Leicestershire and Melton, all of which the inspector has said he is not going to look any further because the SMA figures are wrong. As far as I'm concerned, I would find it very difficult to agree to sending a draft report forward for an inspector, for an inspector to make the decision.
Thirty seconds.
But I will not, I will not abrogate my responsibility. I believe that if I find it unsound, that it is my duty as a councillor to say it's unsound and not vote for something to go forward that I believe to be intrinsically wrong. I've been waiting for compelling arguments, not peddling hope. We all live in hope, but at the end of the day, the inspector will look at the evidence and it is upon the evidence that this strategy fails. It is unsound.
Thank you, councillor Osborne. Councillor Ted Parton, please.
I am desperately worried. I am desperately worried. I'm one of the councillors for this area where we stood now, and I've lived in this area all my life. I'm now 41. And every day that I either go past the town centre or I go into the town centre, I worry about it because I care about it. I see shops closed, I see shops closing, and I just think, where is the plan? Where is the plan to kickstart the town centre again? Fortunately, the inner relief road was passed and we're seeing that, you know, really blossom very quickly. But I want more than that. And I was so pleased when I looked at chapter six and there was plan after plan about how we're going to kickstart the town centre. You know, we've got a world-class university, we can be proud of this. Whoever we know from across the world, we can say Liverpool's famous for university, but we can't say it at the moment about the town centre. I'm ashamed to say that I shop in Leicester and I actually sometimes go to Thelston as well, but I want to shop in Loughborough because I love Loughborough. And I'm so pleased that in chapter six, there are things now being put forward to help Loughborough. We've got to have a plan and fortunately, in chapter six, there is a plan. Something else, we want to live in a clean atmosphere, we don't want to be clogged up with cars, but we need a policy on car parking, we need a policy on bikes and transport. Unfortunately, I see in chapter two, sorry, I apologise, chapter eight, that that is referenced to. So that reassured me. We've got to make it world-class, like the university's world-class. And thirdly, we live, this area and the Stora area has changed beyond recognition. When I was a 14-year-old, I used to collect the football pools coupons from houses. It was an amazing community. It's now student house after student house.
Thirty seconds.
And I'm so pleased to see in chapter five that there are plans to return Southfields and Stora back to how it used to be. We can make this world-class if we try, but we do need a plan. I'm pleased to see that in these three chapters, there is a plan to turn this back into something like a world-class place that we want it to be.
Thank you, councillor Parton. Can we have one meeting, please? Because I would like to call on councillor Jonathan Morgan, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. It's always interesting to sit through a meeting like this and realising how important it is to us as a council and also to our communities that we represent. In particular, a lot of people came into the meeting saying that they had an open mind and I genuinely actually now understand what that means because actually sitting here, listening to some of the speeches of some exceptional quality, and I'd like to pick out a few of them. Councillor, you'll, I, we, it was a very good speech and actually very interesting. Councillor Williams likewise, very good speech and very, very interesting. Councillor Barclay likewise, and also councillor Shepherd. And those speeches go on and it's great to be in a planning meeting where actually it's not party political, despite the fact that we're sort of arranged in a slightly party political way, that in a planning meeting, this is actually about investigating the evidence and actually finding out how the document in front of you, how well it actually works for our community and those that we talk to and our residents. And as far as residents concerned, I represent Outwards, which I'm incredibly proud. It's the most beautiful part of our community. I'm slightly biased, but recognised by the Open Spaces Initiative from the County Council as being Leicestershire's best and most loved green space. And I'm very impressed that actually the core strategy represents those views of our residents. And I'm very pleased that actually the Outwards will not be built on as part of the core strategy. I'm incredibly angry that actually some of the opportunistic applications that have actually come through because we have lacked a plan are actually causing such angst to our residents and causing so many problems. We need a plan to stop those applications. That's clear. And we need to make sure that we actually have a plan that is robust enough to deal with the sort of issues that councillor Osborne has raised and also councillor Sharp. And the only way of doing that is to actually throw it open to an inspector because it's quite clear that actually as a community, we will all have separate views as to what actually works and what doesn't work. An inspector will come in and be incredibly robust with the evidence put forward and all of us will have the opportunity to actually speak to the inspector at the examination public, put forward the passion and the belief that we have about what's best for our community. So as far as this plan's concerned, I particularly enjoyed listening to the views expressed and those still to come, but I also believe that actually an inspector provides an incredibly robust examination in public and it's up to all of us to make sure that our views are actually represented today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. I call on councillor Jane Hunt, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. In reading these documents, I've read all these documents as you would be aware, I'm sure, but I've also looked at some websites to do with particularly the Sue areas. And there's one particular one to do with Garrington that was written in 1999 where it talks about that there may be a need to develop the estates in the future, not the park, and that this would have to be considered very carefully. And I was very interested in those comments that were made there. I have to say, over the years, I've been in two minds with this decision since first getting involved some years ago. The Thurston Sue in particular is more difficult for me in terms of the whole of the borough and I have to look at it as a borough council looking across the whole of the borough. As I've said several times before in other meetings, Leicester City Council should build on their own brownfield sites, residential and commercial development. However, we do have a duty to cooperate and that is what we've done. There have been other large developments throughout the borough over past years. I've been here for 10 years, but they've perhaps been for longer than that and they've come from all political persuasions. Petrie Lane, for example, in Haven came to a full council meeting, which was a name vote in the previous administration. Maxwell Drive Estate, of course, Truway Drive, Howan Fields, et cetera. There are more, I'm sure, but those are the ones that came to mind. In the end, what we have to do is look at what is best for the borough in the long term, and it is a long-term plan. The options put forward in the LDF do in the end provide this as there are sites which are evidence-led and we have around a thousand pages of evidence to show that. I would dispute the consultations have not changed the plans that we've got, particularly the Thurston Sue has changed quite a bit since the first start of it. Yes, it has. The larger sites give us the opportunity to work and gain the funding for high-quality design and infrastructure and that's what the fact that there are a large number of houses is what produces that. A plan is mandatory and needed to control planning for the whole borough and as councillor Shepherd said, it is a wealth of detail in the plan and is worthy of submission.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The only way to control indiscriminate building is to have a plan. No one has said anything so far that provides evidence on why we should not be taken, this should not be taken to the inspector for me so far. One point the councillor Sharp made about numbers magically disappearing, that's part of the allocations policy, which he scrutinised very carefully and called in. So I feel sure you understand exactly why that happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Hunt. I call on councillor Ken Jones, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Most of what might have been spiked somewhat by what Smith said before, but I just want to say that this has to be evidence-led to do. It is ingenuous of us to think of any way. And after years of consultations and deliberations, this is evidence leads us where we are today. I know that people here don't like to hear that, but if it's been solved via Mount Sol or Barrow, the audience have been solved in Mount Sol and Barrow, not Shipp shed. You're protecting your own, I guess. But so that's why it's so important that it's evidence-led, that it's evidence leads us where we are today.
Thank you, councillor Jones. I call on councillor Ron Duke, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mind's a little more close to home as an argument. We are required by law to submit a plan. I don't know whether we do it this week, next week or when we go into the next century, it is by law. To date, it has cost us, and when I say us, I mean the residents of Charmwood, £2 million. That's what it's cost with all the consultations, the consultants, officers' time. And if we reject it now and it goes on another two years, that'll be another £400,000. We are at this moment suffering financial constraint from the government of some 28%. I can't justify adding to that, especially when the developers, when we turn something down, we'll go straight to appeal. If they get upheld, we get stopped with the legal costs. At the end of the day, ask yourself, is it not easier and better to go now to the Secretary of State's representative and air your worries in public? This is the real way to do it. And the other thing is to make sure that your statements to the Secretary of State bear weight by. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Duke. Councillor Paul Harley, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Big girl. I'll get you back. I'd just like, before I start, to thank councillor Matton for recognising the fact that due to the last consultation that we had, the actual red misters, we call it in our area, was actually changed. It was fundamentally changed. We actually moved two and a half thousand houses out of Thurston Parish, away from Thurston Parish towards Hamilton. Thank you very much for recognising that and thank you for recognising that as well, councillor Jane Hunt. Very much appreciate that. But tonight, what we're actually discussing is a report of the chief executive seeking approval for the submission of the Charmwood Local Plan Core Strategy and its supporting documents to the Secretary of State, the purpose of examination to be held on the soundness of the plan, Madam Mayor. The council is also asked to consider the publication of a supplementary paper to a sustainability appraisal so that public views again can be obtained prior to the examination in public taking place. And we're going to have a six-week further consultation, which will be fed in to the examination. Now, should members tonight approve the recommendation in the report, it will be submitted to the planning inspector in December for approval or rejection. Now, planning inspectors are not in the habit of rubber stamping such submission. And should this go through, this will not rubber stamp any future planning application. Both North West Leicester and Melton's core strategy documents were ejected by the inspector. Now, at the examination in public, residents will be able to submit concerns over what they considered to be the council's failure to consult the local community, the concerns over reasonable alternatives that have not recently been considered, such as alternative sites, doubts over the deliverability of the plan in the timescales required, which is the trajectories for the building of new houses, and they can also question the £18 million transport plan. What we're asking for is for this document to go forward to be examined in public by an independent inspector who is very hard on the evidence
Thirty seconds.
and will inspect the evidence in detail. That's what we're actually talking about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harley. I call upon councillor Diane Wise, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this plan is flawed for a number of reasons. I think the number of houses is most probably not correct and it will therefore be returned to us because the plan is unsound. I'm particularly concerned about the area north of Berstall, which forms part of the plan. It would destroy the area of separation between Berstall and Roathely and would thus extend the urban city of Leicester through Berstall, across the A46 and on into Roathely. This would benefit Leicester, but certainly not Charmwood. In 2008, this area was seen to be the least suitable option and I'm not convinced that this should now be a chosen site. Me, nothing has changed, apart from the fact that the road transport system is even more congested now than it was then. I think the name Roathely Garden Suburb, well, that amazes me. The name was chosen 100 years ago when a few very highly desirable residences were built in Roathely. I still have an original developer's leaflet. It would still appear to be developer speak today, but for a very different and welcome development. I've heard people say that even when this plan's in place, the development-led building initiatives that have ruined many of the villages in Charmwood will cease. This is not so. In other areas where a plan exists, developers are still successfully appealing applications on sites which are not in the plan. I think the public consultation was a box ticking exercise. Hundreds of letters were written by residents in my area, not just names on a petition or pro forma letters, but individual letters. They were delivered to the council offices by a parish councillor. What happened to them? Look at appendix G on the website. There they are in alphabetic order, marked, comments noted, no action. That for me says it all. Our comments, not just from Roathely, but throughout Charmwood, comments noted, no action.
Thirty seconds.
Consultation, what consultation? But very reluctantly, I shall vote to send this plan to the Secretary of State for examination, not because I think it's an excellent plan, but because I do not. I'm an optimist and I can only hope that the weaknesses in the whole plan will be recognised, alterations will be made and it is time that this plan is now considered elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wise. I now call upon councillor David Gasco, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having lived in Berstall for 60 years, I'm reluctant to see any change at all in the surrounding area. I prefer to keep all the greenfields and all the trees which surround the village. But given the number of new dwellings which we are advised Charmwood is required to take on, then no change is not an option. We cannot magic 10,000 dwellings. As far as Berstall is concerned, we, the councillors, have only had one complaint made to us against this proposal. But being aware of the number of complaints raised with Charmwood, we have taken it upon ourselves to talk with the ourselves to talk with the various Berstallians. Their consensus view is that if the proposed debt development reflects the Hallam Fields estate and has no school, no shops, or community centre, but does have houses pushed closely together, then their answer to the development is, thanks but no thanks. When we were able to reassure them that the proposal was for a garden suburb with its mixture of houses of all descriptions for the young, the old, and the infirm, and would include shops, schools, and surgeries, they warmed to the idea. In fact, one asked that we reserve him a bungalow. Even the editor of the Berstall Post has said that he is not averse to a well-designed housing development. What bothers them all is the anticipated increased congestion on Loughborough, coupled with any thought of any more traffic being rerouted into Wanlip Lane. They said that this would be totally unacceptable to them. Though I realise this is not an issue for consideration tonight, it is an issue which will have to be dealt with either at the public examination or when the issues are raised in the planning committee stages. The people with whom we spoke were unaware of these additional procedures. They thought tonight signaled the end game. It does not. We pointed out to everyone with whom we spoke the implications of not having lodged core strategy, of unlodged the core strategy with the Secretary of State, and the consequences should devote tonight to against this proposal. They were unaware that for the foreseeable future, in either case, the developers would be able to apply for planning permissions directly to the inspectorate, and history would suggest that they will get that permission. The developers, not the planners, will be in charge of the future of Charmwood.
Time is up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gasco. Councillors, I have, it's approaching 8.30, and I said that we would break. I have four councillors in the queue wishing to speak. May I ask if councillors who would also like to speak would press their buttons to indicate that they wish to speak? Yes, no, I, no, yes. Because if I have no further buttons pressed, I am going to carry on with the debate. But if you wish to speak and have not already done so, can I, will you press your buttons now so we have an indication of how many people are likely to be in the queue? Very well, we have four, we have three people in the queue now. I am, I'm going to carry on. Councillor Shergill, are you wishing to speak? Yeah. Right, I will continue then, and I call upon councillor Harper-Davis, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a couple of comments I'd like to make. As a local, or one of local Mountsor Parish borough councillors, I would like to make note that Mountsor Parish councils have expressed their support for the LDS by written gesture. And the second comment I'd like to make too, we've heard for's and against, and we've heard time after time, infrastructure. And every one of my colleagues here know how sensitive I am to infrastructure. That's the schools, that's the interface, the surrounding services for our local community. There's nothing more dearer to my heart than that. And what I would like to say is, allowing the plan to be sent for the examination in public allows us to work with the developers where we can plan the infrastructure, where we can plan support services. So we have to give the opportunity to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. I call upon councillor Pauline Ransom, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the public. I wish to actually just reiterate, my fellow councillors, all of us in this room, the status that this is actually a draft, and I'm going to repeat a draft presentation, to the inspectorate so that we can actually go out and that my residents across Charmwood, I represent Barrow Conso and Salby West, and I'm very proud to be of that, and so that my residents can actually choose when and where we would like. I know we have to have houses, we are all expecting to have houses, we're not actually against it, but if we get this, and the inspector, it's not foolproof, as councillor Shepherd and councillor Morgan said, and my fellow councillors have said, this is not foolproof. But what I feel, and it's only my, it's my personal feeling, that if we get this to the inspectorate, it comes out into public, then as residents, we can actually put our feelings to the inspectorate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ransom. I call upon councillor Smith-Hewitts, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've read all the documentation, and I appreciate the level of detail it contains. For as long as it has taken to prepare it, I would not have expected less. The council has a legal requirement to submit a core strategy or suffer the consequences. And whilst in my heart I would love to vote against parts of it, I am even more concerned not to put the plan forward for a detailed inspection, the consequences that we will suffer will be even worse, an even worse scenario of speculative piecemeal developments. We are already subjected to developers targeting beautiful sites, particularly the ones near the Outwoods, and making the most of our lack of an accepted strategy, but even worse, winning appeals. We don't have, if we don't have a core strategy, we can expect even more, and we'll be bankrupt trying to fight the appeals. I do appreciate the anxiety the Charmwood borough residents are feeling at the location and the size of specific areas, and I'm equally concerned to preserve and restore as much of our heritage as is humanly possible. We can't ignore the past, we want to bring the past into the future and make Charmwood as a whole borough, a lovely place to be and live in. Garrington Park has already been mentioned. There's a lot that can still be done in the detail, when the detail comes, but various heritage places are already suffering from neglect, and if we don't do something about them, then they'll just disappear. So with an eye to the future, if we have a core strategy in place, we will be better placed to actually define and refine the planning applications that come in, and look to the future where we've got lovely designs and not just quantity. So I'm looking for quality and not just quantity, which could become the ghettos of tomorrow.
Thank you, councillor Smith-Hewitt. I call upon councillor Shergill. And after councillor Shergill has spoken, unless anybody presses their buttons now, I will close the speak queue. Councillor Shergill.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Mayor, Wanlip and Berstall residents have grave concerns about the scale, scope, and impact of the proposed garden suburb, particularly Wanlip. The proposal included in the local plan to build at least 1,500 houses on Wanlip Hill will effectively, one, eliminate over 50% of the remaining green space in Wanlip, and two, have a serious impact on the services they share with Berstall, three, further the emerging evidence or associated overspills from what is included in the local plan onto the east of A6, cause for concern, is a cause, is a grave cause for concern. Decision about this overspill, threatening as it does the identity and integrity of one of our smaller settlements, should be driven by local and not national requirements. And above all, the proposal currently detailed in the local plan to build a link road from A6 to a so-called Wanlip bypass to join Wanlip Lane through Berstall is absurd. It will be diverting traffic off the A6 trunk road and bypassing an under-used park and ride facility. This additional traffic will then be drawn unacceptably close to Wanlip Village through Berstall, where there is already a comprehensive traffic calming scheme in place, protecting those living, working, and studying in an area of residential housing, three schools, a preschool, and housing designated for the elderly. Now, I do understand that the bypass consultation is to take place in November, but we feel we must allow you to what I have already mentioned, to allow the planners to reconsider their plan. Madam Mayor, sadly, I would also like to emphasise the Hallam Fields School, which has not been built, which was promised to the Berstall residents, and they are most disappointed. And in the new development on Wanlip Hill, we hope this will not be the case, and the school will be built there. In spite of this, I support the core strategy submission, because if we do not...
Thirty seconds.
The building firms will take over and build wherever they like, and the borough will have no control. Therefore, the residents will not be listened to at all in this way. And don't forget, we need to plan for the future generations. Let us submit the plan. The inspectors can only reject it, and if it's worthy of fame, if it's worthy of further improvement, then let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shergill. The speaker's queue is now closed. I now call on councillor Slater, the second of the motion. You reserved your right to speak, councillor Slater, so you now have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having listened closely to this evening's debate, I will pose two questions which I'll come to shortly. The report before you describes how the strategy meets its legal obligations in preparing an evidence-based plan, particularly Appendix K, the duty to cooperate, and Appendix M, an independent study using the very latest evidence and methodology, which concludes that a planned figure of 790 homes per year is about right for Charmwood. The report also identifies, using the very latest and up-to-date information, that 166 of them need to be affordable, and strongly supports the policies proposed that will deliver them. An independent planning inspector also advised officers that the plan was workable with some small amendments. We need to be clear that tonight's decision is not a planning decision, but specifically about whether the council should send its evidence and consultation responses to an independent inspector who, after examining all the evidence, will alone decide one of three things. One, agree the plan is sound. Two, conclude the plan is unsound. And three, agree the plan could be made sound. I therefore pose my first question. If anyone believes they have evidence that suggests the core strategy is unsound, why would you not want to submit it to an independent inspector for examination? If your evidence is right, he or she will either amend or reject the strategy. If submitted, the strategy will carry increased weight when considering planning applications. Planning officers will more easily be able to refuse the rogue planning applications that are currently bedevilling this borough. If the strategy is not submitted, officers' ability to control these unwanted developments will be seriously impaired and with no adequate mechanism to deliver the required infrastructure and affordable homes. So my second question, Madam Mayor, what do you expect to happen that will be better by not submitting this core strategy? If we don't submit it, planning applications will continue...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. If we don't submit it, planning applications will continue to pour in uncontrollably. So to oppose this motion gives support for continuing planning mayhem across the whole I've heard tonight speeches from either side, and the points raised by all people, and I've not come across one of them that could not be addressed by the inspector in public.
Time up.
Madam Mayor, on this basis, I urge your councillors to support the motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Slater. I call on councillor Bardy, Cabinet Lead Member for Planning and Sustainability, who moved the original motion to sum up. And as you know, councillor Bardy, you have five minutes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, councillors, for this evening's inputs by all of you. The comments that you have made this evening, I'm sure that all councillors here have one thing in common: we all care about this borough, and we care passionately about the wards which we are privileged to represent. But these privileges also carry duties and responsibilities. In this case, we, as a borough, have a duty under the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act 2004 to prepare this plan, and responsibilities to our children and grandchildren to ensure they have homes they can afford, as do the elderly and the vulnerable, and that we make provision for employment land so people in our communities can work near to where they live, that we create green spaces so people can enjoy recreation activities and lead healthier lifestyles, and that we have proper and sustainable infrastructures, such as schools, healthcare, retail outlets, outlets and roads, et cetera. None of these can properly be achieved without our plan. The plan that we've been working on for nine years, a plan that spans all political groups, a plan that we have consulted on, that is evidence-driven, that is sustainable and deliverable, a plan that you've helped to shape through the 11 scrutiny meetings that have steered us here to this meeting this evening. We're not asking you to adopt the draft plan this evening, we're here to decide if we're to send the plan to the Secretary of State for examination in public. A little more about this process then, what would the inspector be looking at? The inspector will assess whether the plan has been prepared in accordance with legal and procedural requirements, the duty to cooperate, and whether it is sound. The plan must pass a series of robust tests and challenges for it to be found sound. It must be positively prepared, justified and effective, and consistent with national policy. What does all this mean? Positively prepared means that it meets objectively assessed development and infrastructure requirements, including unmet needs from neighbouring authorities where it is reasonable and sustainable to do so. Justified means the most appropriate strategy when considered against the reasonable alternatives and based on evidence. Effective means it is deliverable over the plan period and based on effective across-boundary strategic priorities. So a very thorough examination. And it is only if our plan passes all these tests will it be returned to council by the inspector for consideration of adoption by councillors. You know that this is a tough examination, cleared by the failure of two of our neighbours to pass it. So councillors, there is only one sensible way forward in my view. Do you consider the plan is the best we can put forward, and that it is evidence-led, sound, and deliverable, then support the propositions. On the other hand, you feel you have evidence that makes you confident that the plan will fail any of these tests, then have confidence in your evidence, and confidence that the inspector will agree with you, then you too should support the propositions. What's the alternative? Would we have to send our plan to the borough, two, through to the Secretary of State? We will be letting our communities down, all of them. The developers will see this as a green light to submit applications for development, not only in the areas containing the draft plan, but throughout the borough. And without all the infrastructures and safeguards that you are so anxious we should have, our communities will be decimated by such developments. Why? Because in the absence of a plan, or a five-year supply of building land, or a plan laid dormant, then there is a presumption in favour of such applications. Developers only have to ensure they're basically sustainable. So there you have it. Plan-led or developer-led, your choice, but I urge you all to support the propositions before you this evening.
Thank you, councillor Bardy. Thank you, councillor Vardy. The Chief Executive will now confirm the motion which is to be put to the vote. Mr Parker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it's all typed on part A, page one of the agenda papers. I'll give you the reasons and the recommendations, which are as follows. To comply with Section 20 of the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act 2004 and Regulation 22, the Town and Country Planning Local Development England Regulations 2012, the Charmwood Local Plan Core Strategy and Supporting Documents listed in Appendix A to the report of the Chief Executive be submitted to the Secretary of State so that it can be examined under Section 20 of the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act 2004. To ensure that any minor amendments and corrections can be made to the core strategy and its supporting documents prior to submission, that the schedule of minor changes in Appendix J to the report of the Chief Executive be noted, and the Head of Planning and Regeneration be given delegated authority in consultation with the Lead Member for Planning and Regeneration to make any further minor amendments and corrections to the core strategy and supporting documents prior to submission. Thirdly, to ensure that the additional parts of the sustainability appraisal have been subject to public consultation before the core strategy is examined in public, that the supplementary paper to the sustainability appraisal attached in Appendix D to the report of the Chief Executive be published for six weeks of public consultation after the core strategy is submitted, and any comments received be submitted to the Secretary of State as part of the examination process. And fourth, to ensure the housing topic paper includes the most up-to-date expression of the Borough Council's objectively assessed needs to assist the inspector's understanding of the council's housing service, that the Head of Planning and Regeneration be given delegated authority to amend the housing topic paper, April 2013, to incorporate the findings of the Charmwood Housing Requirements Study, October 2013, as attached in Appendix N of the report of the Chief Executive, in consultation with the Lead Member for Planning and Regeneration, and to submit this to the Secretary of State as a further supporting document to the core strategy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Parker. I am now putting this motion to the vote. We are going to have a recorded vote. The Chief Executive will read out the name of each councillor present, and the councillor will indicate whether he or she is voting in favour, against or abstaining.
Councillor Barclay. Councillor Bevington. Councillor Boca. Councillor Bradshaw. Councillor Cumple. Councillor Capleton. Councillor Day. Councillor Draycott. Councillor Duffy. Councillor Forrest.
Abstained.
Councillor Fryer. Councillor Gaskell. Councillor Grimley. Councillor Hampson. Councillor Harley. Councillor Harper-Davis. Councillor Harris. Councillor Jay Hunt. Councillor Em Hunt. Councillor Kay Jones. Councillor Dukes. Councillor Lenny. Councillor Maynard Smith. Councillor Meyer. Councillor Morgan. Councillor Newton. Councillor Osborne. Councillor Pacey. Councillor Parton. Councillor Palin. Councillor Poland. Councillor Paul. Councillor Radford. Councillor Ranson. Councillor Sharp. Councillor Shepherd. Councillor Shurgill. Councillor Slater. Councillor Smithowick. Councillor Em Smith. Councillor S Smith. Councillor Snark. Councillor Sutherlandton. Councillor Vardy. Councillor Williams. Councillor Wise. And councillor Yool.
I got them wrong then.
Yes, you thought-
I got eleven on the first page.
Eleven?
Oh yes, I wish I had. And I've got seventeen, eleven, sixteen. Then I've got- One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Who have you got different to me?
Ranson.
Shepherd. Shurgill.
Slater. Smithowick.
Snark.
Sutherlandton. Vardy. Wise. Yool.
Ah, that's why I've made a mistake. So you're right. So it's carried. Twenty-eight, seventeen, two. You can say the motion's carried, you can say twenty-eight, seventeen, two.
Councillors, ladies and gentlemen. The motion is carried. Four twenty-eight against seventeen, abstentions two. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, councillors, we come now to the close of business. Please note that the next meeting of the council is on Monday, the 11th of November 2013, in the Preston Room at Woodgate Chambers. And the deadline for questions on notice and motions on notice for consideration at the meeting is Friday, the 1st of November 2013, at 12 noon. Members of the public, if you are intending to go at this point, could you leave quickly so that I may close the meeting, please? Thank you for your attendance. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the public, thank you very much for your attendance this evening. I'm not going to ask if you've enjoyed the meeting, but I hope that you have found it interesting. Fellow borough councillors, it has been a difficult evening. It's been not as long as I thought it was going to be. I think we have had a very professional and a very well-conducted meeting, and I thank everyone on both sides of the chain for that. It could have been difficult, and you and I pay tribute to your professionalism and forbearance. And if I were wearing my hat, I would take it off to you. And I look forward to seeing you on Monday, the 11th of November. I now declare the full council meeting closed.